Next blue card.
Boundary change committee, Aida El-Sagir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Aida El-Sagir. I'm PTA president at Becker Elementary, treasurer at STEM Middle School. And I'm here tonight to know, one, based on what the parents' representation and the community members were selected for the capacity committee. This is one. Two, how many parents serving on the committee are now district employees? Three, since we have heard about that important discussion from the media, and we were surprised, I think the stakeholders should be included in any future discussion in regards of the boundary changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Boundary changes, Khalil El-Sagir.
He left.
Okay, a new high school, Nabeel Al-Talaya.
Hello.
My name is Nabeel Al-Talaya. I'm a PTA at Miller and PTA council. You know, I'm a safety coordinator with the public school, PTA. So regarding the issue we had in Ferguson High School over more, over capacity, so we want to know if you guys willing to go to get a new building for the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. So for those of you with blue cards that dealt with the capacity issue, that is a discussion item later in the agenda, it makes more sense just to let that discussion item go and everyone can listen to our comments on that at that point. But thank you all for your comments. Next item.
Okay, approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Finance committee meeting, April 10th, 2017. Building and site committee meeting, April 10th, 2017. Executive session, closed evaluation, April 10th, 2017. Executive session, closed negotiations, April 10th, 2017. Regular P-12 meeting, April 10th, 2017. And study session, P-12 meeting, May 8th, 2018. Make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
The date for the study session, May 8th, 2018?
May 1st.
May 1st.
2017?
Oh, 2017.
Just want to make sure.
I just read whatever's put in front of me.
Nice catch.
Okay, who made that motion?
Fedwa.
And then Hussein. And then the amendment on that date, May 1st, 2017. Any discussion as to the minutes? May I attach a unanimous affirmative?
Yes.
That's motion carries. Next item.
Recognition and acknowledgements. We'll move down to D, acknowledgement of donations.
We've got Shane Peterson coming up to provide that.
You're honest today, Mary. We've been all over the place.
As we're jumping from.
We're jumping all over the place.
I'm crossing things off as I go.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is a good, this is good. A donation of $450 has been offered to Hague Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for ELL resources to improve extensive interventions. A donation of $1,800 has been offered to the Bryant Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Natural Wonders Courtyard project. A donation of $1,380 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Business Professionals Association, Business Professionals of America National Leadership Conference. A donation of $3,000 has been offered to McCullough-Unis School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used to host robotics competition, which I believe is this Saturday. A donation of $650 has been offered to Nowlin Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for math, language arts, science, and social studies for the classrooms. A donation of $2,500 has been offered to William Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Let's Become Scientists and Engineers. A donation of 25 books has been offered to the Early Learning Coalition by Ms. Catherine Morrison, literacy coordinator for middle schools, to be used for Books for Babies. A donation of 14 books has been offered to the Early Learning Coalition by Mr. Xavier Simmons to be used for Books for Babies. A donation of 20 books has been offered to the Early Learning Coalition by Mr. Marwan Salameh to be used for Books for Babies. A donation of 20 books has been offered to the Early Learning Coalition by Ms. Maria Iliano to be used for Books for Babies. That's it.
Next.
Other?
No other.
No other?
Our next item.
Action items. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
Any items?
Do we need anything for roll call? I don't think so.
I don't, I didn't see anything.
All right, move that. Action items numbered 1 through 19 be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? May I attach a unanimous affirmative? Hearing no dissent, motion carries. I believe Dr. Maleko would like to call someone up before we move on to discussion item.
So I'd like to congratulate and call up Ms. Zainab Baydoun, who is the new, just appointed by the board, voted in as the new director of payroll and benefits. So congratulations, let's give her.
Thank you. I'm super excited to be embarking on this new journey and working with everybody. So I just want to thank everyone for this opportunity and I will make sure I will not let anybody down. Thank you.
So happy to have you, Zainab. Congratulations.
She had a lot of energy during the interviews. Very impressive, I'll tell you that. She really was. Tom, Mr. Wall was also very impressed.
Bless her heart for sitting through her first meeting.
I told her, I gave her a heads up, it might be a longer meeting, so.
I believe we have to read through all these.
Summary of agenda of action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of an award to Prairie Farms per terms and conditions of sealed bid 1313 for estimated amount of $192,237. Approval of a purchase order not to exceed $24,700 to provide professional development services in the 2017-2018 school year. Approval of an award to be made to Aunt Millie's Bakeries as per the terms and conditions of sealed bid 1314. Approval of a contract warranty extension to WTI in the amount of 887,005 and 2 cents. I don't know how we get that to perform the services needed to meet the warranty standards. Approval of, it must be tax, approval of a contract in the amount not to exceed 34,800 to AARO companies for carpet cleaning in accordance with sealed bid 1311. Approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Approval of financial statement. Approval of 2017-18 Wayne Reeser General Fund operating budget. Approval of cooperative agreement with Wayne Westland Schools for 2017-2018. Approval to not accept a school district-wide school of choice program in accordance with section 105 for the 2017-2018 school year. Approval of policy updates and changes per board report 16103. Approval of one-year extension to Plant Moran to conduct audit services for the 2016-2017 year. Approval of donations. Approval of an award in the amounts indicated per board report 16105. Approval of change orders and approval of director of payroll and benefits.
Next item.
Discussion items. All right, now here we get to it.
All right.
Boundary line changes. Dr. Glenn Maleko, Ms. Mesa Malibazi, Mr. Abe Mashur.
So I'm going to have Mr. Mashur and Mr. Wall come up right now.
They're in the hot seat.
And these are kind of all connected, so it's not necessarily that we're going to separate these three items, they're going to kind of come together in one.
So the time limit of 30 minutes is for each one or all three?
Yeah, all three, all three. Yes, the board president has spoken. Abe, Mr. Mashur, did you hear that?
I heard it and I'm good with it.
That's why I wanted to make a point.
I'm good with it. Here we go. Okay, so.
And everybody has, I know we're going to display, I believe, on the side, the PowerPoint, and then everybody has a copy you could put on your computer if you need, you want the PowerPoint.
Well, the PowerPoint isn't working right now, for whatever reason, it's not advancing.
Oh, Mr. Musson will fix it.
Mr. Solvo, technical difficulties.
If I can make a comment while you guys are doing, going through that. I know we discussed some of the stuff at the study session. It was frankly the first time we had talked about it as a district. And so those are all live, they were taped, I'm sorry, they were taped and they are on the internet for anyone who wants to watch them. And the reason we did that is because we want it to be 100% and completely transparent in the process. I want to reiterate that we did that on purpose. It was the first time we had discussed it, it was the first time we were seeing a lot of these numbers or having this conversation, and so the conversation is fluid. Obviously, it's going to be changing. After that study session, we decided to make it as a discussion item again and talk about it right away again at today's board meeting, and this isn't going to be the last time that we're going to be discussing this. And so I thought that was important to point out, and I do understand that there were social media posts out there that frankly were inaccurate, and, but we're not going to comment on those posts. I, I think it's important to have this dialogue here at the board meetings in front of everyone and not on the internet where things can be taken out of context, and frankly, it's an easy venue for people to just throw out a couple sentences and, and without a real fruitful discussion. I think we have to have real discussions and we want everyone involved, and so I do appreciate the people who came today to say how they felt about everything from the Russ Gipp studio to the boundary line changes, to the idea of the new high school. I think these are important conversations that everyone needs to be part of, and ultimately we will make a decision that is in the best interest of our students, but we want the entire community's input in that process. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you.
All right, we still have a little issue, but we'll try to get through it best we can.
Is it the one to share with me?
Yes. It's okay, it's okay, we'll figure it out, no problem. All right, so first of all, we, we had set up a committee, a boundary, I'm sorry, before we get to the boundary line exemptions, a school capacity committee, and, you know, that was made up 16 members. We had administrators, we had people from the community, there were other invitations that were sent out, some people declined, some were staff members that worked in our district, and some were parents that declined or, or community members. So we went with the 16 people that we had, and we met on three different occasions, and we discussed some other things, we had emails and so on. The first meeting, the point of the first meeting was pretty much a brainstorming session to come up with different ideas. We presented the situation, the problem as far as our populations go at, at our high schools, especially Dearborn High and Fortson, being over capacity and so on, and where the numbers look to, to be going in the direction that they look to be going in. So we presented that situation, and then we kind of tried to work from there as to what were some possible things that we could do, some different ideas that people had as far as trying to alleviate some of those issues. Again, the population, our current population at our high schools is above what our capacity allows for, especially at Dearborn High and Fortson. Atso is below what their capacity allows for, but when you combine all three high schools, the numbers are higher than, we have more students than what our capacity is. So we have to look at a few things. First and foremost, you know, the foresight of the, of our school board to sell the Howe property was, was very, very critical in order for us to make some of the changes that we are currently making and we will, we will be looking to make. The Howe property, you know, had we kept it, it wouldn't really serve the purpose that we needed to because Howe would be so close to Etzel Ford, so it wouldn't be a building that we really could do a whole lot with, with regards to alleviating the issues at Fortson and at Dearborn High. So from there, we said, okay, well, we have this money that we get, what we got from the selling Howe, the Howe property, and from there, we started adding classrooms. We're adding classrooms at Dearborn High, we're adding three classrooms there already. At Fortson, we're adding five, at Michael Berry, we're adding five, and at Lori, we're adding one classroom. So, and at the Michael Berry Center, we're, we're also adding two science labs to accommodate the, the STEM school students and the DCMSD school students as well. So we looked at different things like that. What are some of the, the changes that we're making as far as not making rather, but we are suggesting some? So the, one of the proposals was to say, okay, let's see if we can re-figure where our students are going.
Abe, I'm sorry, I don't want to stop you, and I know in your presentation, I think it's important while we're having this conversation to get an idea of what the numbers are going to be in 17, 18, 18, 19, 19, 20. I mean, if you can at least say those numbers, it's just hard to have, to understand what your options are without understanding, or can we put it in front of the camera so that people can see it at least? I know, it's, it's not.
Will that work? Which way am I facing? I don't know.
I don't know how.
There we go. That work?
I think there's, see, I think that that's important, that people see that. Oh, there you go.
Even better.
Going back to old fashioned technology.
Multiple Google sharing advancements.
I just shared the one with you. No, I forget to share, to put David on the one I share with the board, and I dropped it in the board's driving.
All right, that's fine. Okay, so. Yeah, that's fine, we'll make it. All right, so our population currently as we stand, so if we do nothing, as we, you know, we just keep everything the, the same way it is with boundaries being the same and so on, as far as our populations go, 2017-18, this upcoming school year, Dearborn High will be at 2,068. Etzel Ford, 1477. Fortson will be just under 2,900. Okay, now, even if we make changes, the changes are not going to affect 2017 and 18, we're looking for the changes to affect 2018 and 19 and the years after that. Our goal, when you look at research and so on, the, the ideal high school is right around 2,000. You don't want to be above 2,000 as, as much as possible. For us, we have three high schools and we have over 6,000 students, so I, we have 6,100 students right now. Our idea is to think that, or to say that, let's see if we can balance that out to make everything more equitable. Other factors to consider that are going to affect enrollment, Ford Motor Company is obviously.
I think trustee Thor wanted to interrupt with a question.
Going back to the slide right before with the populations.
Yes.
As currently configured, what are the capacities of those high schools? What would you say we should really have in them?
Dearborn High, as we are currently are, you want to be around 1,800 or 1,900 at the very, very most. That's why we're adding classrooms there regardless of, of anything. Atso Ford, you can be around 1,800, 1,900. Fortson, you want to be around 2,300.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
And there, the board did a few years back, we actually have all the data on both, two things, we have recommended, and then we have maximum capacities, and.
We have an ideal capacity and a maximum capacity.
Because then curriculum is impacted if you go too high.
Now, when it comes to, when it comes to projections and so on, we have to consider many factors. One of those factors is different things that are going on in our community. One with the Ford Motor Company expansion and new families coming in that obviously may, will likely affect enrollment in our schools. Changes in immigration laws, as we know, we've, we've taken in a lot of immigrants, a lot of refugees over the last couple of years, so that's, you know, added to our population growth. And then the population growth in the city of Dearborn is, is another thing that we have to always take into consideration. And as Dr. Maleko said at the start of the, the meeting today, you know, it's, it's a great problem to have, but I, you know, then again, we still have to come up with some solutions for it. One of the things that we're going to do, we already work with Stanfred, which is a company that helps us with our projections, and then we use all our data that we have internally to, to determine where our students are going and, you know, what, what our numbers are going to be like, okay? And so everybody knows we don't lose a whole lot of students in Dearborn, if, you know, we lose students like any other district, but we, our, our numbers are very, very small, our percentages are very small over the past five years as to the amount of students that we lose. And then the amount of students that we gain, especially in ninth grade, which again is going to affect the high schools dramatically, the number of students that we gain, we gain 23% on average more students in ninth grade than, you know, than we lose. So our percentage in, in ninth grade is 123%. So not only do we retain the majority of our eighth graders, but we get a huge influx of ninth graders. One of the groups that we'd like to get a second opinion from is either Plant Moran or Middle Cities. So that's one thing we're asking the board is if we can, you know, get, get going on that to get another company that works with us there.
So we're also going to, and I already communicated with the mayor through SEMCOG, has data, so we're going to look with SEMCOG as well, I've already requested that through him, and then we'd like to do a second, like I said, whether it's one of those groups or another independent group to give us hardline data. So again, as we're doing this, we're still in discussions for these things, we want to make sure we have the best possible data in front of us, do our due diligence for that, because, you know, with this, it is a bit of a science and an art. It's predict, you know, it's, what are your numbers, but then it's also making those predictions when you don't know what Ford Motor Company and the impact and other things. So those companies have metrics and systems where they can assist us.
Can we ask, what are the costs for the two studies? Are they miniscule or are they major?
No, they're.
They're not major.
No, they're not major.
I mean, they're relatively small.
Probably.
Few thousand.
A couple thousand dollars, no more than that.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Okay, we talked a little bit about the board's vision and the ability that it gave us to add classrooms and additions and so on. We talked about the, the classrooms and where they're being added currently as we speak.
Can I add something on that? Obviously, the board has discussed, but the, the location of where Howe was isn't helpful to the situation, the property, and that's why selling it helps us now because it frees up resources that we can use if we have to expand or do things at Dearborn High or other places, potentially.
Guys, so one long-term option that was suggested by the committee was to build a new high school. Building a new high school, you know, let me, Mr. Wall, speak a little bit on that.
You were going to go a little way, I thought. Yeah, building a new high school is one of the options we talked about. It's not something that's a short-term need, it's really going to be a long-term need. Obviously, because there's a lot involved with obviously the size of the high school, you'll need a good anywhere from 40 to 60 acres for a high school, high school site. And obviously, it was not something we can just pay out of our own fund balance, it's something that we'd have to go to the public for and bond, which means we have to get architects involved, state approval, so that is a long process that you're talking anywhere from five to seven years out before that would actually come to fruition.
Question on that. Where did the $90 million number come from? What does a $90 million high school look like?
It's not going to be your ostentatious high school like a Celine High School, that one itself, because that was part of that process, was about 125 million, but of course, that was a half a million square feet. I don't think that's the purpose we need here, because as, as we talked to earlier, we want to keep the student counts under 2,000. But as anything, in any kind of building, the more design you put in, the more special features, that price can skyrocket way past that $90 million figure.
Sure, sure. And last week, I don't remember us talking about spending $90 million.
No, but it was just an option that was on the table, that we want to make sure that.
We updated our, you know, the, the slides here to throw that $90 million out there, and I'm kind of like, I'm not very happy that it wasn't presented to the board at a four-hour retreat and now we're putting it out there. Just making a point.
Okay.
If I can speak to that, I think trustee Lane had mentioned how much the cost was years ago when you guys were looking at building a new school.
At a minimum, at a pared down, we couldn't get anything, and probably a lot of people remembered Unis, McCullough-Unis, the Unis, Unis part is the middle school. That was between 30 to 40 million.
And I was on the high school task force after the bond task force, back then, when we were discussing, that was in what, 2002, I think, somewhere around there?
Right.
And A, we couldn't find the property because you needed acreage for, we, we couldn't find a continue contiguous piece of land to build it that, that fit the size that you needed for high school, and B, it was, it was, I think, back then, yeah, somewhere in the $60 million range, 75 million. It was, it was because, because high schools require a lot more, and we needed it to be equitable with what the other high schools had to offer, so you couldn't have a high school that didn't have an athletic field, didn't have a gymnasium and, and all the other, a swimming pool and all the things that the other three high schools had, so.
And I, and I think that the reason I interrupted is because when I had heard, I, I mean, I was, I wasn't part of the original project, and so I had spoken with Dr. Maleko and indicated, can we get a, a, a number of what it would be to build a high school? So that's why it's here today and it wasn't yesterday, because I assumed it would be 30 to 40 million dollars based on the comments before, but we didn't really talk about it. It was just something that had been thrown out there, so that was just answering your question.
My point was, I wasn't around when we talked, when we built Unis, I wasn't around when we talked about, when we went out there. My point was, if you're going to ask me to make a decision, I need data. What does a $90 million high school look like? What can we do for 25 to 30 million? I guess moving forward, I'd like to, I'd like to see that, please.
That's, that's perfectly understandable. The PowerPoint on Monday, or last week, we talked about a bond, we talked about voter, needing voter approval and so on, and we talked about the millage. And, you know, as President Bazey stated, Dr. Maleko said, can we give them a specific number? So yes, this PowerPoint isn't exactly as it was a week ago, but we've taken some things out and put some things in just for clarification purposes.
Can I add too? We had a meeting after, and part of it was we listened to the commentary of the board and then it adapted, created a new presentation because we didn't want to go through all the things that we already went through because that's on the, the video and people can watch it. So really, it's kind of a shortened version in some of it, and it was also just listening to the commentary. So that's when President Bazey did speak to me, I said, okay, well, we can get a rough estimate. And I did do some, some searches myself of national averages and things, what it takes.
Yeah, but Dr. Maleko, we sat here for four hours last week to tell me tonight that we have a rough estimate. I, I don't know what that means. I'm not pushing for fourth high school, but I know there was a parent that, you know, wanted information.
Right, absolutely.
Sure, sure.
Again, this is, this is discussion, and for us, we'll collect all the information, whatever data or, you know, more information that people want, we'd be more than happy to share. We're looking for solutions like anybody else, so it's not, you know, again, this is discussion for, for everybody and obviously for, give you, the board an opportunity to think some things through, and whatever direction we're given, we'll, we'll, you know, Tom and I and whoever else is involved, we'll look at, you know, every option possible and continue to present.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Okay, so short-term option A proposal, that's the one that suggests the boundary changes. Okay, so Dearborn High, Dearborn High currently gets students from Bryant, from Stout, and from Unis. Okay, so the boundary changes would have just Bryant and Unis, those would be the only two schools that would feed into Dearborn High. Atso Ford currently gets students from Stout, from Smith, and from Salina. Okay, so now they would get all of the students from Stout, all the students from Smith, and all the students from Salina. Smith right now feeds mostly into Etzel Ford, but there are, there is a small percentage of students from Smith that do go to Dearborn High. Fortson currently gets students from Lori, Woodworth, they get most of Woodworth, not all of Woodworth, and this proposal, they would get all of Woodworth, and they get some students from Unis. So the students from Unis would all go to Dearborn High as opposed to being split between the two schools. So what, what does this do? Does a few things, obviously it balances our numbers a lot more. Okay, so that's, that's the biggest thing we're looking at. And it's going to take a few years, just because again, our enrollment is so high right now that it's, you know, just changing the boundaries isn't going to, you know, change the numbers right away because there are still kids there. We're not going to move students who are currently at Fortson or at Dearborn or at Etzel Ford, we're not going to move them anywhere. The current, the students who are currently in the, in the, you know, whatever high school they're at will continue at, at that high school. So it'll take a couple of years as you see from the numbers, and then after, by the time we get to 2020, again, with our projections being as they are, that, then these numbers can change. Again, this is what we're using for these numbers here is the information we got from Stanfred, and then our current students that we have today in our schools, in our middle schools. So again, by 2020, we're right around 2,000 at every school, that's the most ideal number, especially for a district our size, as far as population, as far as population goes. And then from 2021, 22, et cetera, we should be again right around that 2,000 number. Fortson will be a little higher, but then again, Fortson can accommodate more. That would still be under the ideal, ideal number that we had for Fortson's capacity.
Abe.
Yes, I'm sorry.
When I'm looking at this, and I was flipping between the two different charts, looking at the numbers, what I was seeing was that for Dearborn High, there really isn't much of a change in any of those years. But what I saw is.
But what I saw is that Fortson, once you hit the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year, you've got a drop of about four, five hundred students.
Correct.
All right.
Because Eunice does, you know, a lot of those students at Eunice currently feed into Fortson. So if you take those kids out of, out of that equation, then that's, that's gonna give you the change.
And just to be sure too, this does not, these are numbers that don't account for dual enrollment or students that go half-day to the Michael Berry Career Center or the Early College, or any of that?
Those, those students are, are in.
Are in these numbers, right.
Yeah, but students, they're currently in here already, so.
Right, okay. Well, just because people tend to get confused as to where the students.
Here, here's the dilemma with that, I know, I did receive a phone call today about somebody, you know, some, from someone who was concerned about the, the proposed changes, and they asked that very question, and the thing is, is you're still gonna have a cluster of the day, whether students are dual-enrolled or they're going to DCMST or what have you, we still have a cluster of the day where pretty much most of our students, over eighty-five percent of our students are all in the building at the same time. So we're still gonna have that dilemma in the middle part of the day, be, be it third, fourth, fifth hour, second, third, fourth hour, just depending on how schedules, scheduling is at either Fortson or Dearborn High.
That's what I wanted you to clarify, 'cause that's what causes confusion.
No problem. Some of the proposal benefits, instruction, the feeder-track model will be more, you know, more clear-cut as, as opposed to right now where we have students at Smith that are getting split, students at Stout that are getting split, students at Eunice that are getting split, and students at Woodworth that are getting split. The schools would directly feed into the, the high school that they're, you know, of that track. It's gonna create equity, as I stated earlier, between all three high schools, it's gonna improve programs, extracurricular programs would be available, you know, just by increasing the population and decreasing the population would be, you know, and having a better balance will, will, will help a lot of the programs at our schools. And obviously, the infrastructure expansion that we spoke about earlier, we'd be alleviated from that kind of cost. Okay, regardless again of what we do, whether we do boundary, you decide to make boundary changes or keep it as-is, we still need to add classrooms at Dearborn High. And one of the recommendations is to add an, an upper level to G Hall at Dearborn High that will build an, will allow us to build an additional eight classrooms. And that's something that if we get started with, we need to get started with the process in order to have it ready for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year.
What is the cost of that, to do that?
You know what, that was on the first slide, and I didn't put on this one, Tom, sorry.
It'd be anywhere from one point five million to three million dollars. So i- in your actual package, you actually have an updated enhancement fund millage, and in there we have allocated at least a million dollars this year and next year for that proposal, 'cause that'll take a two-year.
Enhancement millage.
Correct.
Okay.
So we could potentially do that by itself, and then just deal with kind of the issue, the boundary line issues. We could study the boundary line issue more, but we can move forward on Dearborn High.
Right, because the numbers he's shown, we would need those additional classrooms to make sure we don't have teachers on cart all day long.
And if we do that, well, how many teachers are on cart, cart right now?
I believe there's like ten, ten to eleven. There might be more, but the principal told me.
I think it was fifteen when I was in there last week asking.
There's how many?
I think he might've said fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, and so even the eight classrooms wouldn't ensure that not every teacher is on a cart.
Well, we're adding the three classrooms, so that's gonna help, and then the other eight, that puts us at eleven.
Okay, and would that mean that the Russ Gibb Studio could stay in Dearborn High?
It could, yeah, absolutely.
If you do the eight additional classrooms?
They can probably be, Mr. Martin can probably make it work somehow, I mean, it's, it's plausible.
From speaking with Mr. Martin and the community, or, I'm sorry, what he had said on behalf of the faculty there was, if they know they're getting those eight rooms, they will find a way to make it work for the next year. They don't wanna have to lose that space to try to get those two rooms, because they said those two rooms, I think, that would be where the current studio is, it's not gonna be a make or break for them.
Let me ask you something, the two or three additional rooms that you indicated are being added, that doesn't take into account the Russ Gibb Studio?
Correct.
Okay, so that's separate, so if we built this, it would be the eight classrooms on top of the two or three additional classrooms, in three additional classrooms, and then the Russ Gibb Studio could potentially remain there?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions on that before, okay, can I keep going?
Obviously not a very popular proposal, but the Russ Gibb Studio to, you know, if we move that, that would create two additional classrooms. But I, I totally understand, and, and, you know, whether some of the people that spoke today and people that have been speaking with regards to their feelings about moving that studio, I, I get that part as well, and as was stated by trustee Thor, Mr. Martin has told me specifically that, listen, you, we, we will try to figure out a way to make it work if we can keep the studio at Dearborn High.
And I just wanna mention too, that, you know, obviously I've gotten to know that program well, as many of you are aware. I've taped over thirty episodes of students here who do an outstanding job. I went to the film festival, fantastic, it really is. So obviously, there's some, there's disadvantages to moving it, and, and some of the benefits were that you would be able to open it up to the other high school students that could potentially, but the disadvantages, you know, the, the tradition and everything that's been at Dearborn High. So there's some flexibility, if the board, if we get approval on moving on the G Hall, then it allows us for some flexibility. But I do wanna commend the program, it really is, and the people that spoke, it's an outstanding program. I witnessed it firsthand at the film festival a couple of weeks ago, when I saw the videos. I particularly liked the ones where the students and the teachers and Mr. Doley was involved too, directly as an actor with Mr. Dear. So, just a side commentary, but it is, and I know the board has seen, you know, a lot of the work and the things they've done.
Trustee Lane?
Yes, so I, I don't, I'm not questioning at all the value of that program, but how many students from Edsel or Fortson attend the video program?
None.
Basically none?
None.
So, okay, so it's unavailable to them?
It's available to them, they don't take it, is what I had heard.
Is it practically speaking, is it truly available, or?
One of the students, or we have one of our production specialists over here, nodding their head, go ahead. Okay.
So, so that's unavailable for ninth and tenth graders, pretty much?
Yeah.
So I also talked to, because obviously you're hearing the things in the community, and we got emails and different things. So I did talk to the principal, and I also said to bring it to the executives and just look at different options on how, if we did keep, 'cause obviously we're looking at options right now. If we did keep it there, how could we encourage more involvement from the other high schools?
Well, that was the point of building the Michael Berry Center, is so that district programs would be available to all of our district students.
And the buses are already traveling there from the three high schools, that wouldn't be a special bus allocated.
That, that's an advantage, the infrastructure's already there. It would create some scheduling things of students that would have to be there for, you know, maybe half the day, but definitely the bussing is there.
If, if we chose not to move the Russ Gibb program, what other options would we then have with the Michael Berry Career Center? Would that change how we would look at, how we would programmatically fill, since we were thinking about moving things around?
Sure, and so we already have a need of space there, but obviously there's land there too, so, I mean, there's different options. But one of the things I had Dr. Mosalem and Mr. Grzinski working on, as you're aware, removing special ed offices back here to free up space, because they need space, we're expanding a science lab for the STEM program and other things. So it would give them flexibility, the special education program over there is also expanded, so they definitely have a need of space. And those of you who may have gone up to the second level, we've actually created some, kinda like this, we've created some internal classrooms over there to, to allow for more space, so that would, I would say it would give us flexibility and some options. Right now, it's very tight over there at the Berry Center, but with these movements, as special ed comes over, it would have some flexibility for some space, and I believe they said the music room and other things that are available, and there may be some changes coming between the different programs that might free up space.
We'll get to that part in a minute, that the, the music room at Michael Berry is pretty much two classrooms, and the, the thought was to convert that room into the new studio. But like, like anything else, there's gonna be positives and negatives to any, anything that the, the board directs us to do. There's, there's, every way you look at it, the boundary changes, building a new school, et cetera, moving classrooms, moving programs, everything is gonna have its positives and negatives, and I guess it's just our job to try to figure out where we can make sure that the positives outweigh the negatives.